Hello everyone, this is Sui and I'm with Urban Financial Services Coalition. I'd like to welcome you to our special session today. This session is entitled "Leveraging the Power of Tacit Knowledge in the Financial Services Industry." And we have a very, very, very special guest. We have Dr. Cliff Mato, who will be sharing his presentation with us and will be dialoguing with us. And so, we're so excited to have him as a part of the conversation where we can get a chance to sit down, talk to him, and dialogue with him, and share some of his insights and wisdom with us as we continue to grow ourselves. And you know, it is good to have highly intelligent, thought-provoking conversations during Black History Month. You know, I know there's gonna be some time for us to enjoy the Black experience. We're gonna watch some movies, we're gonna talk about some things in the past and things that have inspired us. And it is good to talk about how do we transfer that knowledge, those expertise? How do we do that in the work that we're doing today? Because that was passed on to us in a lot of cases. And the question becomes, how do we pass it on to others? And that is extremely powerful when we do it in our work lives. It's even more powerful when we do it in our home lives and in the lives in our community. So, some of the stuff that we utilize will be transferable. So, to get started, I want to encourage all of you, if you haven't done so, to go ahead and throw your name in the chat. Let us know where you're coming from, where you're participating from. And also, if you have your LinkedIn profile, go ahead and put your LinkedIn profile, the link to your LinkedIn profile in the chat, so that people can network and connect with you. That's the big thing that we believe here in Urban Financial Services Coalition. So, please go ahead and do that. And we are going to start off with a little bit of networking. I'm gonna give you about 7.5 minutes, 8 minutes, to introduce yourself in the breakout room. So, I want to introduce your name, organization that you're with. And one way that you like to keep the tradition of your family alive. Like, how do you keep the tradition? How do you keep the stories of your family alive? That's what I'd like for you to share in the breakout rooms. You're gonna have about 0.5 minutes. So, please, please make sure that everyone, you know, gets the opportunity to go. So, don't hog the mic, you know, allow everyone the opportunity to share. And the breakout rooms are now open. Please click on the link and we'll meet you back here in 8.5 minutes. Welcome back, everyone. Hopefully, you enjoyed your break. I heard that some folks got a chance to make some new friends and make some new connections and to deepen their relationships with other folks. I would like to take a moment before we quickly watch a little information about Urban Financial Services Coalition, see if there was any folks that wanted to give one or two of their best practices that they leverage to pass on the stories in their families. You can either raise your hand or you could throw it in the chat. You know, anyone like to share a best practice that they use to keep the stories going in their families? Dr. Red?
Is my hand raised?
Well, you came off mute, so I assumed.
Oh, Lord. You know, I'm from the South and so, just country and my family were kind of spread out all over the country. We got a family member in Maryland and Georgia, Mississippi, Kansas City. And you know, the thing that we've learned to do is we've learned to do a lot of nothingness. You know, we play cards and look at TV and just in that, just we've learned how to create precious memories. You know, laughing, enjoying each other, eating, and just really, more than anything, just enjoying each other. We just keep it real simple, D2.
Absolutely. And that's some of the best times to share the stories, right? When you are eating around the table, card games, it's easy, it's an easy way for people to now dialogue and conversation and things just come up. It's not like you even prepare, a story comes up and now it gets shared or someone remembers and then now it becomes passed on. There's so many of my family's stories. I learned just being the fly in the back of the room, you know, being at the little kids' table. Wanted to get to the big people's table and you start to learn more about your family members and their stories and how things came along. So, that was excellent best practice. All right, we'll take one more. Darrell Tyler from Richmond.
How are you?
I'm doing great.
Well, I think when I met in the chat with Martin, we kind of talked about the same thing you just mentioned. One thing I'd like to pass along was how my wife, when the kids were coming up, she insisted that we all have dinner together and all the conversations that came from there, you know. Then, as they got older, you know, it could only be done on Sundays. And now, they're on campus or working and stuff of that nature. So, it's kind of harder now, but when they have kids, I hope that they remember what their mom did when they were coming up and insist that their kids, that they sit around the table and talk about any and everything, you know. It's good stuff.
Absolutely, absolutely. I think Oprah Winfrey came up with this thing about the dinner hour, that we can spend at least one hour a week at the table without the cell phones, without the television, and just have conversations that our family...
Absolutely, absolutely.
...have gone by.
D2, Darrell will love this and I know Grace will. But see, my dad loves to tell stories because he's really kind of a legend in his own mind. The problem, though, is he'll tell the same story kind of over and over. So, we've got this family thing now that says, you know, you've already told me that two or three times, but that's okay, you can go down and tell it again if you want to.
That's right, and he can.
He's earned the right.
That's right.
85 years young, this year.
That's right, and I hope that you all are recording these stories so that you can hear them when the opportunity for real isn't available to you. A couple of people have been doing that because you'll forget the story the way it was told.
There you go, there you go. Well, that's part of it, though, because that's the way to add some embellishment.
Exactly, exactly.
All right, so, for those of you who are not Urban Financial Services Coalition members, I want to show a very quick video that tells you a little bit about the organization. And those who haven't been connected with the organization in a while, you can get, again, get the updated story of Urban Financial Services Coalition and who we are as an organization. So, I'll meet you on the other side and when we come back on the other side, we will be introducing our speaker for this evening.
Success is achieved through valuable connections and maximizing opportunities. For minority financial professionals, this once was elusive. But Urban Financial Services Coalition affords the opportunity to network and collaborate with minority financial professionals from across the nation. Started in 1974, UFSC is a group committed to being the best at their profession, living their best life and giving back to their community. UFSC knows that closing the wealth gap starts by building their own wealth, sharing their expertise and wealth-building strategies with communities of color, and by helping minority professionals effectively market their unique skill sets and match them with employers who value diversity. UFSC is building a legacy by preparing and developing the next generation of minority professionals. Learn more about the connections and opportunities UFSC offers at www.ufscnet.org.
And ladies and gentlemen, I have the pleasure of introducing one of individuals to UFSC that I had the opportunity to meet about when I was 100 pounds lighter. I was in the Richmond market, I had the opportunity to go to one of the conference meetings and preparation meetings and I got a chance to meet this young man who was on his way climbing the ladder in corporate America, had some responsibilities, was managing some folks. And I was working as the professional development chair and created a couple of programs and he got a couple of his folks to come into the program that I was working. And I was like, man, this brother is a power player. He was serious about investing in his people and investing in the organization and the relationship has been extremely great since then. So, our speaker entered the financial services industry 21 years ago while doing research of a master, research of a master's degree in organizational leadership. The topic of his thesis was foreign currency risk management in multinational corporations. He has managed operation teams in retail brokerage, human resources, and institutional onboarding. He joined the UFSC in 2003 and held positions of Central Region Representative and Central Region Vice President. Also during the time, our speaker was invited to be a speaker at several conferences across the country on the topic of the War of Talent in the financial services industry. I think we're on the cusp of another war on talent. He is recognized in the industry as a solution-driven leader with the ability to partner in the design and implementation of knowledge management, knowledge transference, and training strategies for all enterprise-level business units, programs, and projects, while directing Department of Operations and Organizational Development efforts. Our speaker is adept in building and managing teams, multi-million-dollar departmental budgets, the development and launch of operations, processes, and procedures, and the promotion of knowledge sharing through organizations' operational business processes and systems to ensure compliance and performance at all levels. He has a strong reputation for being a top performer experienced in improving integration amongst information systems in the organization to facilitate the seamless exchange of information across systems. He's also a former military man that has traveled the world and I am proud to call him my friend and colleague. Let's give a big round of applause for Dr. Cliff Mato. Doctor, the floor is yours.
I thank you, D2. I appreciate your kindness in introducing me. Those are very kind words and I'm gonna try to live up to them, each and every one of them in this conversation today. I have known, obviously, D2 and I have known each other for quite some time. We've spent a good amount of time at national conferences, talking and strategizing, and a lot of what he had mentioned at the 2008 conference that took place was almost directly related to some of the work that I started doing to get my doctorate degree. And that is really looking at ways in which we can share knowledge. We can share knowledge within our operations teams, within our communities, and for me, sponsoring people to come to the developmental workshops that D2 was directing for that conference was one of a lot of the memes that we used and they were actually very helpful and very beneficial. So, thank you, D2, for that. And so, D2 brings up a good point. This, as I started thinking about this topic, the topic of my doctoral dissertation, actually, way back then, I started thinking, because as a leader within an operations team that was responsible for the movement of assets throughout the firm and those assets could be domiciled in the United States, they could be domiciled abroad, there was a certain amount of knowledge and expertise that were required for those skills. They were different skills, but they required expertise for both. What I had started to notice is when people would leave, it would take a while to rebuild that knowledge base to be able to do it in a way that was efficient and, you know, while maintaining our ability to remain compliant with the regulations. So, I started talking with some of my peers in the industry and different individuals within my organization. And we started developing a program to start training people and partner people with senior people in those teams so that we would get the, hopefully, knowledge sharing, right? You can conduct knowledge sharing in two different ways, right? Both organic, which is, it happens naturally with people, which is beneficial because everybody then believes they're getting something out of it. Or inorganic, which is, you know, kind of driven by the organization. So, we looked at trying to do a little bit of both there. And it had gotten a lot of traction. I was asked in 2005 to come out to the securities, to the securities professional organization and talk with them about some of our efforts and the things that we did. And that's what got me noticed by the folks at Marcus Evans, who asked me to come and talk about the War for Talent in the financial services industry. And it's interesting, I tell you this to give you some background and context about my dissertation, but I was sandwiched between two speakers who, the basic premise of their presentations were, the baby boomers are gonna stay in the workforce forever, they built this, they're not tradition, they're not gonna be, allow themselves to be defined like their parents were as people who put in their 20 or what have you and then get out. They're gonna stay in much longer. I said, well, baby boomers are getting older, the leading edge of them, starting their retirement, you know, in 2006, they're beginning to retire and we're going to lose them. We have to leverage our resources, both within our organizations as well as in our hiring practices, who we target for hiring, where we're meeting those individuals. Or else, we're going to be in a situation where, as an industry, we are going to have problems maintaining the same level of service that our customers require of us because we just won't have the talent. And then, after I gave that presentation, which, you know, basically was, look at the fact, essentially, it was, look at the world around us, baby boomers are retiring, our demographics are changing. We have to start targeting and looking for more people, looking to hire from every aspect of our workforce, not just the traditional one. The person after me came in and said, the baby boomers are gonna stay, don't worry about it. You know, everything's gonna be fine, they'll work a little, they'll work longer, we'll just give them more money. And I was thinking to myself, okay. So, we fast-forward that, right? And two years later, that was 2006, 2008, I think, right after our conference, really. The conference was in July, it was beautiful, things seemed to be just, just fine. By September, the bottoms fallen out of it, right? People, if you watch The Big Short, the shorters are making money, everybody else is suffering. You know, the housing market is plum-dried up, people are getting, the market is dropping 500, 600 points a day, sometimes even more, and people are getting laid off by the die of millions, really, by the time it's over. So, I say that to say that, yes, those two speakers that I was sandwiched between had a point. I don't know if they foresaw that, but yes, the baby boomers did stay in the workforce longer because by 2012, they were still half of the United States workforce. So, clearly, clearly, they were right. But if you fast-forward that to today, the leading edge of the baby boomers, if you think of them as people born between 1945 and 1965, are in their mid-70s and are not in the workforce. And additionally, we've noticed certainly in 2020, 2021, that about two, roughly on average between the two years, about 2.2 million more people per year that were baby boomers, were retiring than we had previously forecasted. So, they were, they were obviously right in the short term. I think, long-term, my position is starting to gain a little bit more credibility or a little bit more traction. So, that gives you some context over, you know, around what I was thinking when I decided to study this topic in graduate school or as in doctoral school, you know, as a candidate. I don't know if I mentioned this, but, and I think D2 had said this too, but I'd like to reiterate, please feel free to just speak up if you have a question at any time during the presentation. I want this to be as interactive as possible. That way, hopefully, I can learn from you as much as you can learn from me and we'll both walk away knowing more as a result. So, I would say, D2, if you could, please change the slide for me. Here's our agenda for the, for our conversation today. You know, I'll talk a little bit about my research purpose, why I chose this topic. I kind of gave you a little bit of an introduction to that, background and demographic trends. And then, we can look at a statement of the research problem. As I, as I told you, I kind of also gave some context around that in my opening remarks. I didn't give as much about the review of the literature. I, there is review of the literature and I think that's important for us to discuss, but I'm going to try to move through a lot of that as quickly as possible because I think we'll get a lot more conversational, a conversation out of the interview findings and what those conclusions and recommendations were. So, I think there's gonna be a lot more interest when I talk to you about what people told me when I interviewed them. So, research program, research background, demographic trends. Purpose of the research, obviously, was to understand if organizations, you know, heard both, any, you know, I think during that time, I should preface, 2006, there were a lot of conversations about the War for Talent. What were organizations, what did they learn from those conversations about, you know, they're just, their workforces, there's not enough people in the workforce for us to, to us employ to maintain our level of service to our clients? Now that we're in that very similar situation, what did companies learn from that previous situation? What kind of programs did they put in place to help train and develop their staff to get, to be able to place them in the roles that they need to? Within operations teams within financial services was the focus of my study. And then, if you're standing back and evaluating these, what would be the habits or the attributes of successful programs? What kind of barriers would participants within those programs face? And how does that impact their success? And when I did the interviews, I allowed the individuals who were being interviewed to define success for themselves because success, me, may not necessarily be success to you. A good example of that would be, and this actually, this actually occurred, was, you know, I participated in this program, at the end of this program, I did not get considered for promotional opportunities and they, that was an individual's definition of success that did not occur for them. Another individual who's currently a participant in these programs, participated in these programs and they didn't get a promotional opportunity, but they got a lot more respect within their team. They have been looked at as somebody who's developing quite well and for them, that was success. So, one said, I didn't get an opportunity at greater money or monetary compensation. The other one said, but I got greater knowledge, more in-depth knowledge in my role. And so, those success can be looked at differently. If you could, D2, the next slide, please. So, background, obviously, is in financial services. Financial services as an industry, as well as individuals that participated in the survey and interview process come from a rich and diverse background. Our industry has, you know, multiple sectors. You have everything from brokerage, financial services operations, as I was telling you about earlier, to operations and insurance, which is dynamically different. Some of them could, some of that could be processing and opening new insurance contracts. Some of that could be underwriting, some of that could be dealing with claims. You have, you know, groups that, other groups that could handle things like underwriting activities, capital markets activities and the like. So, there are lots of different sectors. We looked at, this survey generally looked at sectors involving traditional banking, commercial banking, insurance, brokerage, as well as consulting, who have knowledge that are, that is very relevant and very important to the development and building of leaders within financial services or helping financial services organizations or operations teams build out niche or understand their processes in a way to help them with their efficiency efforts. As you can imagine, as a result, our industry also has complex operations, both domestically and internationally. Of the, of the organizations that were represented, all but one of them had international operations. That one that did not had operations throughout the United States, just not abroad. It is highly regulated because there are laws governing financial transactions in all 50 states. Obviously, there are national ones. For those of you who have FINRA licenses, I think you understand what I mean. I understand blue sky laws as well, but also international. There are markets that our customers trade on that are in different, various different countries and they're regulated by the laws of those countries. So, operations folks who help process those transactions have to be savvy as to the laws and the important rules within each of those countries, as well as the laws and the important rules that they have to do, adhere to here in the United States. If you could, D2. And then, the last part of that is transactional efficiency. In order for an operation, any sort of operations group to be successful, there has to be transactional efficiency. If, you know, you can have one hub and everybody sends their information to that hub and it gets processed in a timely and efficient manner, that's gonna be a lot better than having 50 different groups processing the same things in 50 different locations. So, transactional efficiency is going to be a critical part of operations expertise. All right, so, again, like we, like I had said at the beginning, my, when I started thinking about this, I started looking at the brain drain, right? Which is, the baby boomers who have traditionally built a lot of the things, a lot of the processes and procedures and things that we're looking at today, they're leaving the workforce. Whether, you know, they were people who believe they can stay in the workforce and transform the workforce to what their needs are at their stage of life or not, at this point, that's no longer really a question of convenience for them. With, like I said, the leading edge of that group born in 1946, 45, depending upon which scholar's definition you're using, they're in their mid-70s, some of them in their late 70s. They're not... They're, they're not, although you may see some stalwarts at the very highest levels of organizations. You're, you're, you're probably not going to see them in your middle management roles, your upper management roles. In terms of directors or the likes. You may see a CEO or two that would fit that demographic still in the workforce. Perhaps, but that's not what we would expect to see. And the remainder, which would be, you figure the individuals born. Between nineteen fifty-five and nineteen sixty-five. Are also nearing retirement, retirement age. And what we've seen, as I'd said before, with the. The, the increased amount of retirements is that they're not really staying. In the workforce to, to that, to the extent that was previously thought. Slowed immigration is a big part of, of our problem. And what I mean by that is if you look at immigration statistics from twenty sixteen. And you break them down by your current, you would see that in twenty sixteen, there's roughly two and a half million. New Americans per year coming into the country. When you look at, and that number is just steadily. Has been decreasing since then. To the point of where we are today, or last year, for that matter, where we had. I think about, about in the neighborhood of three hundred thousand. So that is a dramatic drop in, in the amount of people. Now, there are various factors for that. I think some people might say. The obvious one is COVID, the impact of COVID. And yes, that, that would be a part of it. I think the other part of it that we have to be honest and consider is the political environment has not been very conducive to. International immigration from two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty. And we'll see if that changes this year. Maybe that will. That will help, but. All of this to say, which is the last bullet is our workforce is getting smaller. Is getting more diverse. And if I, I, whether companies like it or not, I, I hope that they, they like it and they're. They buy into it and they get on board, but even if they don't, there's relatively fewer choices or alternatives for this just because. That's our, our workforce and our demographics say that it's going to continue to get smaller over time. It's going to continue to be a little bit older. And it's going to be more diverse. Women are already half of the workforce in America. And we have seen that the workforce is, you know, there's data that's showing that it is starting to become more and more. Diverse demographically as well. Yeah, and then you can, you can see, as it says here, that, you know, the US population. Has become less majority, one ethnicity majority. In a rate that's a little bit faster than what we had previously thought. I think in twenty twenty, the thought was that the US population would be about. Sixty-two percent Caucasian. So as you, as you see, that's. Four percent less than that was where we actually went, which means we are right on the cusp of. Majority less society, which will probably be in until. You know, twenty, twenty forty, twenty fifty. And then obviously the two point two million more baby boomers that have retired. So. We do see that. The, the die is cast, so to speak. The tide is, the tide has turned and, and, and there's really no going back. If you could, the next slide, please. So, what does that mean? What is all, what does all that mean? What it means is the state where I'm in, Minnesota. States of California, the state of New York, certainly in Illinois. I think there's enough evidence that is, is probably everywhere have entered their nader years of workforce growth. That has been accelerated because in two thousand thirteen, here in the state of Minnesota, for example, there was. The workforce expanded by eight thousand, but there were twenty thousand international. My immigrants that, that came to settle in the state of Minnesota, and that was the reason. So. As you can see, that obviously is now going to be accelerated since that number is far less than that. And we would expect that, at least. Here in this state, it, it started in twenty twenty where it would hit its nader year workforce growth. And we do expect that. To continue on for, for probably the next decade or so. So the impact of COVID, you know, like, like I said, this was not a part of my study. As much, I think with my interview participants, I asked one question on the impact of, of COVID. To them. But it would be, we'd be hard pressed, we are in the, in the age of COVID, those past three years or so. We'd be hard pressed not to, to mention the fact that yes, it, it is likely to have been a, a sizable impact on the. The declination, I believe is the appropriate way of saying, saying that of international immigration, but it is not the sole. There's not the sole impact. Clearly, it has impacts in other industries, industries that are forward facing. And industries that come in direct contact. So in banking, that's, you know, most of your branch personnel. The thing, individuals in those roles that couldn't work from home or just because the nature of their job, they, they were impacted by. By this. Some of the banks did make allowances in terms of compensation changes for them. But. That, that would be one of the, obviously one of the impacts. And it's important to note. I think as we all well know, that many of these roles where you are coming into direct contact with individuals with the public. Are, are roles that are disproportionately held by women and people of color. And so that was also an impact to COVID. So, the research, the statement of the research problem, this is really, this was the. Research statement. This is what I looked at. You know, and towards, in terms of saying, this is what my dissertation question is, is going to ask. So the problem statement, you know, kind of like we had discussed earlier. The baby boomers comprised half of the workforce and in twenty twelve. During the time of this study, we've seen, obviously, the lead edge of the baby boomers no longer. No longer really in the workforce. And then we also saw an acceleration in the amount of retirements year over year. And we expect that to continue, right? Over the next couple of years, according to the Federal Reserve. You know, that can, that can continue at higher rates than, than projected for the next two years. So, you know, although we expect the, the tail end to be completely out of the workforce by twenty thirty-one. That, that number could change based on how, on this, the accelerated rate in which they are currently leaving the workforce. So here was the research question, you know, what strategies are financial organizations implementing to capture knowledge? The tacit knowledge really of retired personnel. And the reason why that's important is because. You know, I've built this, this kind of story for you all where I'm, I'm explaining that. You know, workforces, our workforce is shrinking, it's becoming more diverse. And we have a lot of nuanced sort of things that we have to understand to best serve our clients. So there's really two things we can do there, right? I mean, at the end of the day, we're going to be in a war for talent with. My company would be in a war for talent with your company or your company with, you know, your neighbor's company. I've already kind of painted the picture, there's a finite amount of resources. So of course, what. What are companies doing to develop their people? But also, what kind of knowledge do they need to have or need to understand to automate as much as they can as well? As, as another aspect of that, right? Because I think everybody initially. When I spoke to, to people before I started doing interviews and when I, I had to defend that this was a viable study. I had to answer that question, you know. Well, why can't I just automate this stuff that? You know, I, I don't think it's going to be a problem that baby boomers will leave. I mean, okay, that's great. I'll just automate this and. I will, I even need probably even fewer people than I already have. But that, that can't be true in our situation because. Like I said, we have too many nuanced law or too many laws, too many rules. That, you know, apply here in the United States, but also then we have to understand. How do the, the countries in which some of our, our, our clients are doing transaction, how do they treat those things? What are the rules there? You know, you can automate an amount, but you gotta have somebody who understands not only those rules, but the spirit of those rules. Especially if you're automating something because you have to be able to automate it in a logical sort of way. A good example of that is. Take the settlements of trade, of trades in, in the securities market throughout my career. That has, for the vast majority of my career, that has been T plus three has been what we call a trade date. Plus three days to settle the trade. So if you buy a stock, you buy it on Monday, that's your trade date. Then I have three days to give the other side of the money and they have three days to give me the securities for my client's account, right? Well. A long time ago, and I, I, I mean, I, I really do mean a long time ago, probably. You know, my first time out to the depository trust corporation in New York. They were talking about T plus one. And so they, that's where their goal is, right? And they've been talking about that since two thousand. I want to say two thousand four, two thousand five. So a long time. Here we are, it's twenty twenty-two. They've whittled that down now to the standard trade taking T, T plus two, right? I traded, then there's two days to settle. But you can see that sort of nuanced knowledge is going to be important in developing any system. That you use to handle and settle your trades, right? You have to, you can't say, well, today it's, you know, T plus three. So I'm just gonna make my system to only do that. I have to have that variance to allow that to happen. And there are still various regulatory rules. I have to be able to demonstrate that my system is, is doing. During that time and I have to have checks and balances. Ultimately. I may not need the same amount of people, but I'm gonna need more people. I'm still gonna need people to monitor the system. So. You know, that's the other part of the reason why I, you know, this question became important like it was. There were some secondary questions that really were necessary to get to the meat of the primary question. And that were, you know, what barriers existed? You know, what were best strategies and how, and how do organizations define program success? And then how effective? Were the programs in, in common practice? And that's gets to the set of, the crux of the types of questions. That I really started asking people when I interviewed them. So. Thank you, D two. So, the review of the literature. I'll take you through this relatively quickly. I looked at types and tech taxonomy of knowledge. How, how are? What types of knowledge are out there in the literature that people are writing about that companies are collecting and companies are using? Particularly in financial services, how are they arranging it? What, what kind of hierarchy? Is there a hierarchy that they have for this? If so, what is that? What does that look like? How does that, how does that work? And then I looked at, within these organizations, what is the role of knowledge management within each of these organizations? How do these organizations see it as being a part of, of their, their operations? You know, there are some organizations that may not think it's important to, to manage the knowledge. There are some organizations that see it as integral part of their overall ability to provide. Solutions and cost and service to their customers. The difference between tacit and explicit knowledge and how that plays into, into that. And then creation theories like SECI. Which basically, the slight definition of that would be that knowledge is created. And the interchange between moving from tacit to explicit and then moving from explicit back to tacit. And what that really means is. Maybe a good example is I, I ask an employee to write a procedure on how to do a particular thing. So they're taking the tacit knowledge that they have in, in their head and they're making it explicit, right? They're, they're putting it on paper. They're, they're, they're canonizing it, if you will, into a set of processes and procedures that can be picked up and read by another person. That person reads it and then they look at it based on their understanding and, and maybe after practicing it for a while, they develop certain efficiencies. Or again, tacit knowledge, it's knowledge that's not written down, but it's gained through experience and learning. And they're, and they're writing it. Or another way in which you can look at it is. You have a trainer and that person trains the person based on the, on the procedure, but they also start taking them through. The individual through the shortcuts that they had developed, having done this process and seen the results time after time. Or, you know, as, as well as ways in which they can troubleshoot problems in the, in the procedure because. They have had the experience of doing it and they've seen where things have broken down. So when they see something break a particular way, for example. They kind of, they kind of have an idea of where to look to, to, to look to see where the problem is. Those are good examples of how the SECI theory works to create additional knowledge, right? So. You know, when I tell you something, you may walk away from that based on your experience. You may take what I'm saying in a particular way, which may, which may create additional knowledge that did not previously. Exists and you may share that with somebody else. And that. They like the other, so the other two are two different types of, of business theories. One, the, the knowledge process product and performance or KP three assessment tool really looks at. When you, when you're looking to create knowledge, it's why, why am I creating this knowledge? How am I, you know, it, it's more than just a blanket theory. It's I'm creating knowledge to, for a particular thing. Or to a particular. To manage a particular process. A good example might be if you are getting a new software system. But you don't, you don't currently have procedure manuals for it. You might use this sort of a process to create those, those sort of. Procedures, you know, so you're creating with a particular aim or goal in mind. And then resource-based theory just essentially says that. I'm going to create the knowledge I need to maintain my competitive advantage. I have an advantage in, in this, in this space. The knowledge that I have will likely continue to reinforce my advantage, which. When we think about it, makes sense, right? You know, you, you have a company. That is really good, for example, at selling mutual funds. Well, that's all they do. They probably have spent a lot of time thinking about how they're going to sell those mutual funds, how they're going to package them. How they're going to market them. Whereas a company that doesn't do that or hasn't done that is probably going to be at a bit of a disadvantage. In that respect, because they haven't thought of all of those, all of those things that are necessary. You know, what kind of twelve B one fees they're gonna want to charge or how they're gonna, you know. How, and they, they probably have a, you know, less name recognition. So they're not getting their foot in the door with the brokers to the same extent as the, as the companies that, that this is all they've ever done. So. So, you know. They're going to create not knowledge and that is going to continue that competitive advantage. Could these next slide? Thank you, sir. And then there were other aspects that we looked at, right? The, these are the ones that I, I think the everyday person, when they think about. Working in a corporate organization, these are things that directly impact them almost every day, right? What is, what is the demographic case for studying this was, was what I was looking at and I kind of articulated that to you. To all earlier. What are the barriers? And we're going to talk about those. Uh, uh, um, you know, when we get to the interview questions, but just a synopsis of them would be. Uh, barriers around ethnicity, barriers around uh age, barriers around gender. Uh. Each of those kinds of barriers were were uh. In the interview questions that I asked people, you know, so those were the uh some of the obvious ones, just to give an example. And then what's the role of corporate culture? There are some corporations whose culture may uh be conducive to greater knowledge transference. Uh, conversely, there are some corporate cultures that may. Be a hindrance to knowledge transfer. Um. And then obviously, when you talk about culture, you have to talk about leadership, right? Because they the the leadership uh are the people who determine what the culture would be. They enforce the the rules and mores of that culture. Um, so you can't really talk about one without the other. And so those sorts of of questions uh came out in the literature review because they ultimately manifested themselves in the interview questions as well. All right, so now to the to hopefully the the more interesting part. Um. So, uh, the interview participant background, like I said, we had banking, insurance, wealth management and underwriting services. Uh, the overwhelming majority of the people that were um that. Agreed to participate in the in the surveys and the interviews. Were individuals who would be considered in leadership levels. So we had uh one gentleman who happened to be a divisional leader. Had five hundred people in his division reporting up through through him. We had uh managers with uh far fewer roles, but uh, you know. Uh, still had people that directly reported into them. We had individual contributors uh and and I I. I lumped for the purposes of brevity, I lumped a lot of the the uh individuals that I interviewed that were. Um. Either um. Own their own business and and contracted with. Financial institutions to provide them uh particular advice uh in terms of. Pro- some in terms of program development and setup, others in 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 terms of. Um, you know, process efficiency. Um. But then in that also within that group were people who actually were employed by organizations. That were senior individuals but had no direct reports. So a good example, that might be a product manager. I'm I'm responsible for managing a product. Uh, I don't have people that that were pro- report to me. But I I I am also judged on the merits of my individual contribution to the organization. And then uh we had um. One individual who uh. Was in their role for less than six months, so that's the that's the the least amount. Uh, and then the greatest was uh uh the largest side of that was somebody who had been. Um, working in this industry for well over twenty years. So we had a very large range of of individuals uh experience wise that participated. Uh, the majority of the individuals educated uh were college educated. Uh, we had, uh. Uh. When I say college educated, I I mean, uh, the majority actually of the college educated individuals were people with graduate degrees. Uh, and the minority of college educated people were people with just a bachelor's degree. Uh, and then there were uh twenty two percent of the of the participants that had. Uh, some college experience uh or no college experience, but had um. Relevant licensure experience to the role in which they are currently uh working in. Uh, and then uh we had a very, very diverse background. We had uh individuals who were African American, Asian, Asian American. Uh, and then Caucasian as well, so so a little bit more diverse than uh. Um. You know, originally I thought it was gonna be, went into it. Uh. The limitations that uh for me as an interviewer wa- was that um. You know. I had, uh, I had to go out and actively recruit individuals uh over a particular amount of time. Uh, for anybody, uh, if for those of you who've ever been recruited into this, you you probably know that. Uh, you know. Sending emails or calling people and and asking them, hey, can I take about ninety minutes of your time to to ask you a bunch of questions about thing? It's probably not always fun for everybody. Uh, so I was, I was very grateful for the people who were uh willing to endure that. Appreciated that. Um, and uh, you know. Also, uh, I I I had a limited amount of 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 women. Uh, that participated, which uh made some of my uh some of my statements uh about gender. Um, I had to rely more on uh perspective of men. Uh, but there are some, there were still, there were still a lot of of cohesiveness in the statements that were made by the women participants and made by the men. Male participants as well, so. Um. And then I there. I really looked at three different means in which uh knowledge was transferred. Uh, mentoring programs, uh, we're looking at uh business use cases and coaching. Um, and then um, uh. You know, what I would call um drive and shadow exercises. Um. There are probably, there are others, there definitely are others. Um, but these were the ones that I I in the interviews that came up uh most prominently. So they were the ones that got the most of my attention. Um, and then again, uh. I had, I I I had participants that participated both organic and inorganic. Uh, mentoring programs. Um, I didn't spend a a a lot of time on um. Talking with them about the differences from their perspective, but more time understanding how the differences. Um. Impacted programs on a macro level. Right? And then, um. We didn't get as much into corporate cultures as I would like to. If follow on survey, uh, if I want studies, I would do more of that. Uh, uh, the main reason for that is that um. In order to uh to make sure that everybody's anonymity that was a participant was protected. I didn't wanna ask too many questions that would lead to down the road to what's the name of your company? Who do you work for? Right? We don't, we don't, we. Uh. Obviously, if I know that information, I'm gonna have a lot more um. Under a greater understanding of their corporate culture. Um, what that culture is, because I can, I can go back and research that organization and go through all of their their findings. Uh, but the problem with that is that we could lead to unmasking a participant. And that, in my opinion, um, could uh create a situation where we would not get as forthright answers as I believe we did. So. Um. So these are what I I, these again were what we looked at in terms of what we're hoping for, what were the attributes of best strategies? How effective did the participants find their programs to be? Um. Trust cultivation and relationship equity. This is the the primary barrier that uh. People of color and women face. Right, is uh. You, in order to have an effective mentor mentee relationship, there has to be trust on both sides. Right? Um, or or to put it another way, so that it covers all of these programs. In order for me to tell you something. That is not written in the in the in the documentation that the company is providing you. But will provide you great value in being able to do your job effectively, I have to trust you. Conversely, for you to ask me the questions to get at that information, you have to trust me. So, um, and then. You know, infrastructure support for success. What sort of infrastructure are these organizations putting in place to support success? Or what do the interviewees believe the organizations should develop in terms of uh infrastructure to support success? Uh, next slide, please. So conclusions and recommendations. So over half of the individuals noted that gender was a barrier to net uh knowledge transference in their uh uh experience. And in their company's programs. And this uh was primarily, this answer was related to mentor and uh mentee programs. Uh, a lot of these companies had inorganic programs, right? So they would, uh, they would say, you know, if you would like to uh have a mentor, most companies say that, you know. Here's a process and we'll we'll partner you with somebody. Uh. And the people that participated in those programs, uh, both male and female. In the female's perspect- uh perspective, it was direct obvious knowledge and the and the males that responded. Um, it was, uh, I have knowledge of this because I've had conversations with other participants who happened to be female. That uh gender seemed to be a problem in uh in the effectiveness of those relationships. Um. I, uh, the rationale for that, I think, is that uh for whatever reason, those individuals did not. Um. Did not explore um. Or get to a point where they trusted each other. There was just not a lot of trust in those relationships. Either it was, and and there were various reasons. Um. But I would say from the wa- I that I didn't, I wouldn't talk about in the context of this conversation. But I would say the the individuals who were women. Uh, voiced the feeling that they were not as important. That their participation, that the the people who they were paired with, um. It was more about, well, I gotta do this sort of sort of a perspective that they had, that those mentors had. Um, and as such, those those um relationships did not. Did not get to a point where there there was the same amount of trust. That is, in cases where uh the mentor was not a female. In the case where cases where the mentors were female. Um, there was a lot more, a lot greater success. And a a lot more trusting. Uh, relationship. Um, and I think that uh leads us into, you know, number two. Obviously, there were specific examples where gender was perceived. Uh. Uh, to impact outcomes. And there were some very interesting uh uh. Examples given. Uh, one of them was that an individual worked for an organization. Where the person who sets up and runs these programs, they match the individuals together, they provide the criteria. Um. Uh, and they like uh happened to be a woman. And she wanted to participate in the program as well, but was denied. And um. Her, she was denied and her boss is the global head of diversity for this organization. So I I found that to be a very interesting story. Uh. Um, and was actually quite surprised that that could happen and um. Yeah, I know her boss very well, actually. So, so I know this person's boss very well, so I was really surprised to hear that. But uh despite that fact. Uh, and despite the fact that she's responsible for the overall management and running of this program. Uh, she was not allowed to participate. Um, and then uh a third of the participants noted one thing that I thought was very uh interesting is that. Um. And they looked at it from the perspective of uh of uh promotions. And they looked at it from perspective of feedback uh from people they that they they've spoken to, which is, and their own experience, sorry. There's that uh. There is a distinction. Of of outcomes from women based on race. Um, women who happen to. Be Caucasian have a much more favorable. Uh, perception of of their company's programs and their ability to to uh. To be promoted or to uh uh make it to the next level based on their participation. And that is also borne out in some of these organizations. Um, statistics, at least the ones that had statistics that they were willing to to produce. Uh, that each of the respondents that that said they had. Uh, statistics also said that the majority of promotional opportunities that come out from out of participants in this program. Happen to be of women uh that are Caucasian. Um. And a lot, uh, and lesser of both men, uh, black, black, uh, minority men and minority women. Uh, and and that was that that was also borne out in the conversations I had with women. Um, is that uh women of color clearly felt that the uh programs were not. Uh, um, beneficial for them because um. They were noticing that. Uh. Women who happen to be Caucasian in those same programs had greater opportunity promotion where whereas. They didn't see that same uh same uh future for them or same possibility for them. And their data did back that up. Um, and race was obviously uh. Noted as a barrier by all participants. Or seventy eight percent of all respondents. Uh, um, there was one thing that uh I think. Uh, bullet number four that was important, which was um. In leadership roles, there is a disconnect in the perception. That um. That the programs were designed uh were actually effective. Right? So we have effectiveness disproportionate understanding of of what uh uh. Would be considered effectiveness of the program based on based on ethnicity, particularly in leadership roles. So, um, one of, like I had said, there was a a a interviewee that. Um. Had a very large organization under him. And he did happen to uh be a uh person of color. Um, and I then I had another uh manager who had a a smaller organization, but a a fairly good size. Uh, uh, organization that was uh non-minority. Um, and uh, you know, this, this went on a across multiple different conversations. But but this this gives you a good illustration is that the person who was not a minority thought. That these programs were uh were very helpful, very uh very good. Uh, and that um. You know, they were doing a great job for both women and minorities. And uh. Um, when I spoke to other people at that same organization, as luck would have it, I did. Uh, actually, uh, that person happened to be a person of color and they had a completely different perspective. And and their perspective was. You know, this this company's uh program is really just lip service. It's not, there's, there's, there's nobody that uh in the past ten years that have been in a part of these programs. That has made it to the leadership ranks within this organization. And by leadership, I meant just frontline manager, so. Entry level manager role. Um, uh, and you know, so, so, um. That kind of disconnect obviously would be very interesting uh to study more of. But uh that same feeling I had uh from orga- uh. Individuals from various different organizations. So not just the one, but you know, two or three other ones too. Um, and then. Uh, one of the thing that I I I would say. Um. Oh, yeah, so leadership engagement, obvious, that was another set of the questions that I had asked individuals. Uh, active engagement or championing, championing uh um. The program is obviously gonna be a critical component, but that gets back to the point that we made earlier that. Uh, you can't, you can't uh study culture without studying leadership. And this is why, because uh if leaders aren't championing a program that is or or. Don't have buy-in that that program is gonna be effective for their organization and their needs, it's never gonna work. Um, you know, that's that would be the same for for uh mentoring programs or knowledge. or knowledge transfer programs as it would be for software purchases or or any sort of thing. If the if the organization's leadership does not believe it's going to fit with their organization, ultimately, uh you're gonna run into a situation where um one of two things are gonna ha- occur, right? Failure or there's gonna be a need for culture change, and culture change generally has been a euphemism for leadership change for quite some time. Uh so uh when you think about that, um the interview findings were um that companies, uh each of the individuals within these uh within the interview groups uh all listed that their companies needed to do better at defining uh what their best strategies were and communicating them to their individual uh through the leadership team down to the actual uh people that are potential uh participants. Uh and that would include uh doing everything you can to identify who would make the best candidates for for some of these uh programs as well. Uh they all said greater work needed to be done on evaluating program effectiveness. I ran into situations where uh uh leaders within the interview groups uh all said that they believe their company could do better at uh identifying or 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 building out or or at least meeting to to come up with a defined set of metrics that would define uh program effectiveness within their organizations. That although some of them have them, um they could improve upon them, uh and that would help alleviate some of these situations. Uh and would improve certainly uh trust or at least relate, maybe it would work towards uh providing an environment that is conducive to trust cultivation and relationship equity. If you clearly define uh within within to each of the parties within these programs, um what the expectations are, what the hopes are. Um it it becomes a a kind of a balancing act though, because you can't dictate to people too much, because like I said, that's no longer an organic uh program or or you basically can't tell people they need to be friends with one another, right? Um you kind of set the stage for that, you kind of hope that that occurs, uh but you can't go out there and uh um demand that this person transfers their knowledge to somebody else and that, you know, they they trust this person, uh or they allow this person relationship equity. That's something that has to be earned within the relationship itself. And then uh the last one is infrastructure to support success. I think uh, you know, one of the things that I heard, you know, uh in in this regard was that um people needed to find, there there needed to be some sort of uh a celebration of successes, that that was uh something that came out with many individuals. Um and that uh there needed to be transparency in programs, like I said, some programs provided generic statistics about um how many people participated, um they might say uh ethnic background and gender. Um and then how many of those individuals uh did in fact get uh promotional opportunities after participating in the program? But more more needed to be done there. Um additionally, uh there have been several studies that have shown that um looking at rewarding participation in these programs was an incentive to get uh better better participation, but also more quality participation too. Uh so if people are um not, if if I'm, if I'm holding knowledge, I hold all the cards. Something has to be uh incentive me to want to to give that knowledge up. Uh some people, you know, there were some studies that said uh monetary rewards did help. Um then there are all kinds of other rewards that may have been more successful uh than those. Um but certainly, one of the things that we have to understand is that um we we have to be able to provide a way to show people that participation in these programs, whether you're the mentor or the mentee, will lead you down uh the road towards uh some objective or goal that they may be interested in. Maybe it is more uh more money, maybe it's more uh flexible work environment, maybe it's uh promotional opportunities on both sides, uh which also was uh came out in a a lot of the studies as being uh a a good reason why people uh would participate in these programs on both sides. And I think there we go. Yeah, and and which got back to program evaluation, really. Evaluation of the program should be done on both both the mentor and the mentee side and um. You know, follow-up and trend analysis should be done so that you can see, you can get more clear insight into where your pro- program shortfalls uh exist. Uh and then also um will allow you to look at ways in which you can um address those appropriately. And I think that this, this is one that I was, I I talked about a little bit earlier as well, which is um pipeline development. And then, so so these were the the recommendations based on all the things I just talked about, uh which came out of the interviews. Um especially that last one, reward success, uh multifaceted delivery systems, I think um makes the most sense, right? You can't, you can't deliver training to somebody in just one format and expect everybody to understand it. The same is true with knowledge uh transference. You can't, it's not a one-size-fits-all. Uh the goal is to understand your corporate culture and then look at the types of design that would be best suited for that culture. And then layer those in to uh to your system, what whatever system your organization is looking at and developing. And then um, once again, I kind of, I kind of talked about uh transparency and outcomes. That was something that was very, very important to a lot of the people uh that were interviewed is that that must occur. In order to have uh program credibility, in order for uh, you know, leadership to to um really communicate the seriousness by which they're taking this to their employees for all of those reasons. So, yeah, once again, uh corporate culture uh was uh a critical, should be, and was identified by each of the participants as a critical part of program design. Um and the rationale was, you know, kind of, kind of as we discussed before, which is um your organization, uh you can develop a program, but if that doesn't take into account the the culture of your organization, um it's not gonna be something that leadership leadership is gonna buy into, which is gonna be a problem for getting uh getting people involved, engaged in the program, and also um you wouldn't want, obviously, to develop a program that would be at odds with your corporate culture, because it's the the most assuredly will not be effective and will not succeed. And, you know, like I said, uh before um multifaceted delivery systems, because there is uh wood transferring knowledge, there's no one style fits all. We we need to uh layer the amount of of uh modalities uh that we're 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 um using, and the reason for that is not only um because one side doesn't fit at all, but it's because we get, it gives people a chance to see the knowledge uh or understand the knowledge from various different perspectives, which uh um helps in the app, the ability to apply the knowledge, but also uh ingrains it more into the individual that that is learning it. Next, please. And here's what the actual participants said about transparency of outcomes in terms of of percentages. Right? I think we saw this slide earlier, so I think we can pass that on that. Yeah, and here is reward success. Everybody loved the idea of tying or well, I shouldn't say that. The majority of people uh believe that uh participation in the program should get you to some uh promotional opportunity, or at the very least, they believe that there should be an assignment uh or should open people up to assignments outside of their organizations or or stretch assignments, I think, is what 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 I heard. Uh and they believe that success in the program should open you up to that, because the one thing that uh they really wanted to see was uh the ability to take the knowledge gained from the program and apply it in other areas to see if there were efficiencies in areas that were not even looked at as a part of the program that could exist. So I think a good example that is, if I told somebody uh about was the, you know, the the trade thing uh that I had talked about earlier about how trades are settled. And understanding some of the nuanced knowledge there with regulatory regulatory responsibilities, would that knowledge give uh or help somebody who was settling mutual fund trades? Right? So uh trading a a stock or a stock uh and settling that, could I use some of that knowledge to understand uh or to build efficiencies and how to trade and settle mutual funds? Those kinds of 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 stretch sort of sort of uh teamed events could could be considered. And uh you know, in tie, you know, tying uh compensation and promotional opportunities would increase program effectiveness, not just from the uh individuals who are being uh or or having the knowledge transferred to them, but those sort of uh promotional and compensation opportunities have to exist for those people who are actually doing the mentoring or or the uh leading um and through through the the shadowing uh uh opportunities or the job coaching piece. So um that's really what's meant there is that you gotta have uh promotional and compensation opportunities for both sides of the equation. And that uh concludes my uh what I did my doctoral work on. I didn't hear any questions, but I'm hoping to hear from you all, maybe uh hear something about your organizations and 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 how they approach this or um or questions or observations you've had.
Absolutely. You can either raise your hand or put your question in the in the chat. If you have a a particular uh question that you would like to ask um about tomato, I will start off um about tomato. I have worked with a lot of different um organizations, and they have these programs that they send folks to. And oftentimes, you know, folks, you know, talk about, hey, I went to the program, I came back. And I couldn't do anything. The the content was good, but then there was barriers to me either using some of the knowledge or that knowledge resulted in an opportunity for me to showcase, you know, uh my ability to use this information, so therefore it didn't result into um promotions, and that usually creates frustration. You know, what are some of the best practices um that you heard where, you know, companies can really you know, tap into that knowledge gained from actually, you know, going to these well-funded, you know, programs?
Yeah, yeah, well, I I, you know, that kind of, that is a good point. I I've I've heard and experienced that actually throughout my professional career. Um and I I I would say that the best practice for an organization is to understand where you're sending people. If you're, especially if you're, if you're paying money for this, know where you're sending them, know what you're getting or what you should be able to get from that. And then um keep that, you know, and as situations where that knowledge can be used, come up, engage those individuals, form committees um to address problems that, uh you know, if you send somebody, uh for example, uh uh I went to a seminar on bond math once upon a time. Well, if we're building out a new bond accounting system, why would you not use me? I you you paid for me to go there. Um even whether whether my day-to-day job is in bond management or not, I probably have some insight into how this should work in your system. Um that shouldn't be the sole person there. Obviously, there should be people who do work in that field on a daily basis, but if you need that resource, you should be able to include those people. When I sent people to uh to um events outside of the company that I paid for them to go to, the 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 first thing I thought of when I was implementing things uh were, well, who has, who did I send to to one of, to this seminar on this? I won't talk to that person. What did you learn in that seminar? You know, how did it, how did the uh the presenter uh suggest that it could be uh applied in certain situations? Um what was your your takeaways from there? Um if for no other reason, then as a leader, I want to make a decision that's well-rounded and considered from all perspectives, hopefully. Um but the, you know, that's the least reason. The best reason is they might have insight that this this person who put on that seminar may have insight into how it works in a way that I hadn't thought of. In a way that may completely innovate what I do, and I may have to sit back and think about that. But so many companies don't do that. I have to say, so many companies say, you know, this person wants, I I I gotta reward this person some way, I can't give them a raise. I can send them here. And and, you know, I look at that as a form of incentive comp. Uh which, you know, could be good too for the individual, because it could be incentive for them, right? They may pick up a skill that they take out the door and down the street, but then you run into that problem I was talking about in two thousand and six.
Absolutely, absolutely. Looks like um Howard has a um has a question.
Hey, Howard.
Uh yes, um first of all, thank you for this presentation, cause I'm actually um experiencing or kind of going through some of the things that you talked about in your presentation. Um have you seen, especially in financial services, um kind of uh industry changes? A rapid industry changes um kind of uh become a barrier to passing on information and mentorship?
Well, that is a good, that is a good question. There are um, there are going to be rapid changes, and I think um when you, when we get back to that part where I talked about um the why knowledge is created. Um how, when you look at knowledge creation, what kind, what's the rationale for creating it? Are we creating it to do a particular thing? We always have to look at that uh as we're looking at how, what knowledge is important for us as an organization to to categorize, to maintain, and then to to ultimately transfer to people. I think uh when you, when you look at the industry, if, you know, you could be talking about the difference between the analogy I gave, which was trading methodology. You could be looking at that trading methodology versus say blockchain. Right? Where a person supposedly is able to come in with some sort of uh uh device that they could plug into something and transfer all of their assets instantaneously to you. That would be the sort of rapid kind of change that we see that there's not a whole lot of knowledge on, right? But we still, despite that sort of rapid change, we know that there are regular, there are rules uh as an organization about how we have to safeguard clients' assets, for example, or how we have to um How we have to safeguard clients' assets, for example, or how we have to um, you know. How we have to understand our, know our client, there's uh uh things of that nature um that aren't gonna change. And there are gonna be fundamental elements of that that uh will be preserved in our way of doing business. In perpetuity forever, right? And those things we can, we can look at um transferring to to people and a lot of the the um. The spirit of those rules, so to speak, right? We can look at transferring to people, you know, the reason why we say, for example, um. We make the client fill out these forms and we have to go out and know our client is because we have to understand. You know, how our clients, our our clients' funds uh. Gain in such a way that that um it's legal and above board, those sort of things. Um but yes, there is a rap- th- this one thing that I think we can all agree on in our industry. The one thing that will never stay the same, will always, that would always stay the same is we'll be in a state of constant change. Right, but but there are things, there are, there are ass- attributes of our organization that will. Uh of our of our industry that will always um. Have underlying basis, uh particularly the regulatory ones are always going to have some sort of consistent. Underlying basis that can be transferred to people.
Talk to that, and we'll take the last question from, um thank you, um how, we'll take the last question from Daryl.
Okay, hey, 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 thank you so much, this was a, this was so much to unpack uh. Really, I I would love to have the slide deck on this one, this was a lot to unpack. The challenge that I'm finding and it it. The first half of your your presentation was was Darren Marcus uh the manipulation of data. For 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 whatever reason and it it it's 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 one of those things that. When I was going through graduate school, it's uh one of those things that are kinda shun, it's like paying people to participate in your survey. Yeah, you know, there there there's that gray area, but when we are trying to. Uh tweak and tune, say, I I work in hi- higher ed.
Okay.
Um and we do all of our reporting and uh to include, um you know, paid salaries and stuff of that nature and. How how FTEs have manifested and um right now, we're looking at. Uh the number of minority faculties that are encountered and so when you see numbers that are not as shiny as. You would like for them to be, the challenge that I'm always pushed back at is um. How can we, um I'm I'm gonna clean this terminology up, cause I know there's some people. How 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 can we adjust the numbers, I'm gonna put it that way.
Sure.
Uh so um, that was a challenge and in I noticed in your presentation about how that data. Is is developed, uh the intent of leadership to look honestly at such numbers. Um the culture, oof, the culture involved in looking at such numbers, especially when the numbers are not conducive to how you wish. The public to view you um, what would be maybe a just a teeny bit of. Uh armchair uh quarterbacking that you would provide for how to approach that um that push?
Yeah, you you bring a a good point, uh I think. In most organizations, uh including the one I currently work at, as well as each of the organizations that I. That I surveyed are the individuals I surveyed from those organizations, those organizations have a story they wanna tell. And we want those numbers to tell that story for them and uh unfortunately, we do not see that as the case today. Right, the stories, uh the 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 numbers tell the story that more improvement is required. Uh and will 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 can continue to be. I think for them um and I and I really think that uh, you know. Based on the interviews and and this uh from the study, the individuals within those interviews would say that um. Really, they really have, a lot of these programs really have to do a lot more of defining to individuals. Uh what success is going to be. Uh that includes the individuals within uh as they enter the program, here's what, here's what you should expect. Uh or here's what kinds of opportunities may be available to you, once you successfully complete this program. As well as uh the leaders who actually end up supplying those individuals, right? Because uh it's the leaders or the managers within those groups that um. Have that conversation and that one-on-one that say, hey, you know what, this might be a good opportunity for you or or, you know. Uh I I heard so-and-so was, they participated in this program and and. Look at where they are today, if these are your kind of your goals, let's start looking at. Where you are today and if this is the logical next step for you, or let's, let's. Put a set of steps in order to to we to we get to a point where that is the logical next step for you is to participate in these programs. So we set you up for success, so that when you you walk in the front door, you've already had that uh. Primed, so to speak, you're already primed to succeed in these programs and so that when you get out the back door. Uh that program you with your 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 tassel and your your diploma, so to speak. Um you actually are in a situation where um when you show up for that job, people are excited. Excited to see you, uh they're 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 saying, you know. You know, this is what, this is, you know, this is the caliber of talent we're looking for, we've developed it, that those are the kinds of. Of things you have to, you have to tell those leaders that they have to be doing today. To to get those numbers and to trend in the direction that they they want, so they'll be able to tell that story they wanna do. But unfortunately, uh in the organizations that I I surveyed that. They haven't gotten to that, to that point where they've looked at it and said, you know what? It it looks nice for us to put this on, so we're gonna do this thing so that, you know, we don't lose a competitive advantage. To another company who has this sort of program, but uh. You know, the the only one of the organizations that I I I surveyed. Where the gentleman said, you know, knowledge management and knowledge transfer is an integral part of how. We conduct our business today and how we are going to be able to leverage it for the future. So investing in our individuals is critical. Now, this person would also be the first person to tell you, they're not where they should be today and there are areas that they do need to improve on. But I thought it was a very unique uh statement for a a a a manage. A person who managed a a a group of people within an organization. Uh in in terms of my particular survey. Now, I did have a lot of people who were individual contributors or or contractors or were consultants. Who said, yes, this is what you need to be doing. You know, you 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 need to go out and and you need to have clear-cut criteria, you need to build that pipeline. You need to, you need to have clear understanding in that uh i- in terms of. How you develop your pipeline in terms of who you're talking to and that needs to be something that is transparent and clear. Because that has the added value of giving those people who want to be in those program some side, some sort of roadmap. Uh of, you know, this is what I need to do to even be considered for this program. And these are the kinds of, this is where my, where I'm at today, I can have that conversation with my boss. Well, I wanna be in this program, I know I'm not ready for it today, but what, let's work out a program together. To get there or the boss that sees somebody that has potential to be in that program is not there today can say, I want you to look at this. Let's get together and see if we can get you in a position to to get you ready for this program. Get you into this program, um and those are the types of, you know, once you're able to do that successfully and you. You build your pipeline and then you can start to, you see the results on the backend, right? So now I have this talented group of people that everybody wants. And that's gonna change my depth, that's gonna change my numbers and that's gonna put my numbers uh in a way that I'm now telling the story. Not only the story I wanna tell, I have, I'm telling the story and I have those individuals who are participants telling that same story. And and that's, that's, I think, the best way that we'll get to, to your point, uh get to the point where the numbers. Tell the story that the bosses wanna tell as opposed to the bosses uh seeing the numbers. With a moment of shock and then deciding, oh, we gotta change this, cause this is not gonna look good, so I gotta figure out a way to 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 spin this. So that it works right, so.
Absolutely, excellent, excellent point and um just to add to that. I I'm, there's a, I'll have to send this out to everyone, there's a Netflix study. A Netflix documentary on women in the uh film industry, right? It did the study that um the number, that the number of women who are actually executive producers. Whereas a small number of those and of course, they kinda sued the. The film industry and actually did this study where they looked at when women do show up in movies. How often that there, when they show up, how often do they talk about men? Uh in movies and they actually have created a test, right? To say, you know, which movies actually have women talking about other things other than being in a relationship with men? And so using AI and using um some stuff, they they really, you know, did the analysis. And this reporter in Chicago picked up on this and actually identified. A couple of companies that were doing such a terrible job and she shared that information with the CEO. The CEO was shocked and unhappy, however, he did do something about it. And as a result of him doing something about it, you know, their organization, and he took some serious action and their organization. Went from being at the bottom to now being a shining example of what's possible and so leadership. Does matter and leadership can change um the outcome, you know, the question is, are they willing? You know, do they have the fortitude, uh do they have the right type of culture? Or are we willing to change the culture to position the organization to where they wanna go? So, um Daryl, thank you for a great question, Dr. Tomato, thank you. If you are interested in getting more of Dr. Tomato's, his dissertation or any information from. On Dr. Tomato, how can they gain contact with you, Cliff?
Uh I will put my information in the chat.
Absolutely, absolutely, so you can reach out to Dr. Tomato in the in the chat. Would like to thank you all for being with us tonight, this YouTube, um will be out next week, feel free to share with your other colleagues. And and one of the things I wanna challenge and encourage everyone to do is to be transfers of knowledge. You have a particular expertise, you have a particular set of experiences that you have. Accomplished, you know, already in the financial services industry, don't keep it to yourself. Be a river and not a reservoir. And what does that mean? Take that knowledge and share it with other people, maybe you can share it through Toastmasters. You can be a part of our Toastmasters Club that meets the first and third Tuesday um of the month. You can practice delivering that message out to folks, maybe you could be a speaker for one of our Wednesday sessions. So you can share that info, maybe you could be a mentor to somebody that's new and coming into the industry, or maybe we could just have dinner. Maybe virtual dinner together and we can share our insights together. So again, thank you all for spending time with us, Dr. Tomato, thank you for being amazing and we'll see y'all all next time.